Hello? Hello, can y'all hear me?
There's his number.
What about now? He had you, he had the mics muted.
I can hear you now. Can y'all hear me? Hello?
Okay, I can see your mouth mov- I can see your mouth moving, but I can't hear you right now.
Is that better or no? I don't know.
Hey, this is Randy. I'm giving you a call, so I want to go ahead and play you on.
Will you say something now?
Hello, 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 hello? Hello, hello, hello? One, two, three, four, one, two, three.
Maybe because it's loud in here, we can't hear you right now, but if once it like gets quiet, we'll be able to hear you, but right now, we can't hear you.
I don't know, because the mic's not even moving.
Okay, do me a favor if you can, log out and log back in. Alright, good evening.
Rodney?
Is this on? It's... Good evening, everybody.
The work session for mayor and council for June seventeenth is called to order. Ms. Rainey, roll call, please.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council members, and Mr. Clark. This is the roll call for June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four work session meeting. Mayor Butler.
Present.
Councilmember James.
Present.
Councilmember Anton.
Present. How's that bike doing?
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Present.
He's present, but he, we're trying to get his sound right.
Okay.
Councilmember Akins Wells.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mears. Be a phone. Mayor Butler, you have a call.
Alright, thank you. So tonight is the first time that we've ever done a consent agenda. And so for those who are unfamiliar, just to refresh the memories of others, the consent agenda, I'm going to explain the process and how it's going to work. So the council has the ability to group as many items together as they wish and adopt them all at once without debate. So this is how it typically works. The mayor and chair will present the consent agenda to the city council and ask, does anyone want to remove any of these items from the... Matters on the consent agenda are initial- initially non-confrontational, nor are they controversial. If any member wants a separate vote on an item or wishes to discuss it, they may ask that said item be removed from the consent agenda. So this evening, the routine operational matters constitute the items of the consent agenda as prepared by the staff. So if there's any questions before we proceed with the agenda. Alright, so I'm going to ask if there is a motion, if there's any items on the consent agenda, agenda that the governing body desires to add or delete from the agenda, the consent portion of the agenda. Not hearing any? So is there a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda?
So move.
That was Councilwoman James. Is there a second? That was Councilman Antoine. Is there any other discussion? Councilwoman James?
Yes.
Councilman Antoine? Councilman Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wells? And Councilman Mears? Alright, thank you. The adoption of tonight's agenda, I do know that we need to add an item which would be a budget twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four update. So is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda with the addition of the budget amendment for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four?
So move.
That was Councilwoman James. Is there a second? That was Councilman Antoine. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman James?
Yes.
Councilman Antoine?
Yes.
Councilman Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wells? And Councilman Mears? Alright, thank you. The consent agenda for tonight is as follows. The first is a council discussion on the renewal of the JustFoya Open Records Request Software. Item two, council approval on the purchase of Buckner gear ratification. Item three, council discussion of task order twenty twenty-four dot zero two B for additional renderings and animation of the city center project. Item four, council discussion of task order for Croft to perform design development, construction documents permitting, and construction administration for Star Park. Item five, council discussion of task order FDC twenty twenty-four dot zero five for Falcon Design to perform general contractor procurement and construction administration for the Rite Aid renovation or the Grapevine project. Item six, council discussion of purchasing one Suppton heavy-duty rescue truck, fire truck for use by the Fire and Rescue Department. Item seven, council discussion on the extension of HVAC maintenance contract with ABM. And that concludes the consent agenda items. Any discussion? Oh, nope, we do not discuss. Okay, okay, moving on. Old business. Council discussion of ordinance increasing the hotel motel, hotel motel tax to eight percent. Background and history, the city currently imposes a three percent hotel motel tax. State law provides that cities can increase the tax up to eight percent after adopting a resolution urging the passage of local legislation by the General Assembly. The subsequent regu- resolution has been adopted and the legislation has been approved by the General Assembly to increase to eight percent. It is now required that the city council adopt an ordinance amending Chapter Five Hotel, motel lodging excise tax within Title III Finance in the City Code of Ordinances. Is... Any questions or, or Mr. Clark, would you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Butler and members of the governing body, this is really a perfunctory measure. You'll recall last year, as part of our legislative agenda, we adopted the resolution. It has since been signed by the judge, I'm sorry, by the governor of the state. And if ratified tonight, it will take effect in August of this year.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilwoman James?
No, ma'am.
Councilman Antoine? Councilman Gutierrez?
It seems like a drastic jump from three to five, three to eight, five percent. Was that, uh, so we, we talked about that? We all agreed on it?
Yes, we did. It was passed a few months ago. Councilwoman, oh, yes, sir.
I was just going to share, one of the things I will, I will share with you, Councilman Gutierrez, it is in line with what the other municipalities in Clayton are charging for the hotel motel tax. This is just catching us up to where they've been for quite some time.
Councilwoman Wells?
No.
Councilman Mears? Item nine, council discussion of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Forest Park and Clayton County for GIS services. Background and history, the purpose of the MOU is to provide planning and zoning GIS support services for the Department of Planning and Community Development in assigning addresses, updating zoning maps after a rezoning, land use map amendments, and street name changes. The county services under this MOU will be performed without fees from the City of Forest Park. And good evening.
To the mayor and city council. The MOU would allow us to work with the Clayton County, uh, G, uh, Clayton County Planning Department for GIS services. Right now, we have no mapping system here at the city. Eventually, in the future, we hope to work toward getting our own GIS system up and running here. But at this moment, the MOU would allow us to work with the county to update our zoning maps. Anytime we have rezonies before the council, those maps have to be updated. Anytime we do a land use map amendment, we have to update those maps. And so right now, we have no way of doing that. And even when we have name changes, they would do that as well. They are, uh, the county is already assigning addresses for us as from a previous memorandum of understanding when I was here about two and a half years ago. They already are doing that, and they're going to do all of this for free.
That's excellent. Questions or comments? Councilwoman James?
No questions, thank you.
Councilman Antoine?
Awesome.
Councilman Gutierrez? Councilman Gutierrez, questions or comments? Councilwoman Wells?
No.
And Councilman Mears, did he disconnect?
He did. We're trying to get him back now.
Alright.
Can you hear us?
Alright, new business. Council discussion of a vehicle take-home policy. Background and history. In twenty twenty, the city council enacted a policy pertaining to take-home vehicle, take-home vehicles. The city manager presently seeks guidance on necessary revisions. Subsequent to the transition to a new administration team and the absence of complete historical records, the city manager has drafted a comprehensive update to the take-home policy predicated on discussions with the governing body. This matter is presented solely for the purpose of initial review to solicit input from the city council. Uh, Mr. Clark?
Yes, ma'am. Governing body members, as you know, we've had several committee meetings and smaller settings with the various council people just to get some type of direction moving forward. And it boiled down to really one main fact, and that was the mileage that would be allowed. As we discussed in those smaller group meetings two to three years ago, there was some form of a, a council action relative to the take-home policy, but we wanted to ensure that present day, we had something on the books that spoke to the direction that this governing body wished to go in twenty twenty-four. The policy presented to you tonight is, of course, a first read, and we are recommending direction from the governing body. Just to go over a few hot topic items in here, in our meetings, we discussed that one policy that we found for the police department relative to the take-home provision was twenty-five miles, and the fire department was thirty, thirty miles. Based upon this policy, we're putting both of them at thirty miles with the following exception in our read. The employees shall have successfully completed the field training program or probationary period within the Forest Park Police and Fire Department and be in good standing with the department. Only those officers who are determined to be necessary for callback on an emergency basis for incident response or investigations will be eligible for take-home privileges to residences within a thirty-mile radius from both Forest Park Police Department headquarters as well as the Fire Department headquarters. For police, the vehicles must be equipped as an emergency response vehicle to qualify for this privilege. The positions of the command staff, including lieutenants under the chief of police, subsequently positions of command staff under the fire chief are not confined to the thirty-five, thirty-mile radius. The police and fire chief respectfully will determine those who qualify under the provision and report back to the city manager on a bi-annual basis for approval. The other thing that this, this new policy provides is the submittal of an annual report to the city council identifying all of our take-home vehicles to include but not be limited to the type of vehicle that is being driven, the employee's name, and residence, and justification. Additions and deletions to the overnight vehicle list must be approved by the city manager who will include them on the subsequent report to the governing body officials. Um, so again, this policy covers all of the different instances that we could find with our take-home policy, and we're open to answer any questions that any of the governing body members may have. In our meetings, the majority consensus was with the thirty-mile radius with some additions by department.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman James, questions or comments?
So I, I'll say I appreciate this first read, and I'm going to kind of look over it thoroughly. I'm still struggling with, I know we had talked about the ones that already are doing the take-home policy, not grandfather, grandfathering them in. I think that's the word that we were talking about. But I still struggle with, you know, over fifty miles away from the city and, and using a vehicle. And I do struggle with a lot of the vehicles not being parked within the City of Forest Park. Just as an example, when I drive down by Gillum Logistics, I know we got the new, new facility there, but just to see one car is, I mean, I think it, I think it would help if we have, even if they're empty, some of the cars parked within the city strategically in different areas at different times may help. But I'm going to really look at this and consider it, but I just want to be honest with you and let you know that I'm struggling.
Thank you. Councilman Antoine?
No problem, too.
Councilman Gutierrez?
I, uh, thank you, Ricky, for bringing this to our attention. I am okay with thirty miles. That way, we kind of have that uniformity with the police and the fire. Also, um, I, I definitely want to, I understand the importance of our roles as policymakers that we want to make policies, but I don't want it to seem we're micromanaging. I think we have in place some amazing chiefs and leaders that, you know, if they need to make any adjustments, they will, and I trust the city manager as well with that. So I'm, I'm okay with this. I know also we have some, you know, specialty, uh, uh, some, some positions that's, that are like specialized individuals are in them. And, you know, I appreciate them coming from somewhere else to work here. I mean, as a preference, I would love for all of our employees to live in Forest Park, and I would love, you know, in an ideal world for, you know, cars to be all over our city so that they can see the presence. But, um, you know, they're already making it made with all their hard work that they're doing in our community. So thank you, Ricky, again, for putting us all together and getting us together in these subcommittees. I enjoy that. I hope we, we do this for, for other things as well.
Mayor Butler?
Yes, sir.
If I could just respond to Councilwoman James, one of the comments with regards to the vehicles parked around Forest Park. So we do have an, our call upon the chief to explain, I don't want to say the terminology wrong, but I think the proper terminology is drop cars or something to that effect. We have started deploying more drop cars, and one of the, one of the good problems that we have is that when this administration came in a little bit over a year ago, there were over thirty vacancies. Well, now we don't have those vacancies. Matter of fact, I think as of today, we have one or two within the police department.
No, I want to say that we have two vacancies on the books, but they are slotted to, I mean, their start dates, projected start dates in the future for those. Uh, and yes, they are called drop vehicles. Uh, we are utilizing one in, uh, in one part of the city to help curb some of the crime. Um, and we are, we do have options to still deploy them with some of our vehicles that we still have available to place them strategically out of the, throughout the city.
And the other thing, Councilwoman James, we echo your sentiments exactly about how we would love to see more of our employees live here. And I think that's the beauty of us working on diversifying what the housing portfolio looks like in Forest Park so that you can, or we can have employees that can actually find housing within the city. We're doing an amazing job of new houses coming in. So I'm just excited for what the future holds for us to be able to have more employees living in the city, especially our police forces. And I also note that with some of our newer developments that are coming in, we actually talked to the developers about having housing for those public safety entities, not just police, but fire as well. Now, the firefighters can't take the fire trucks home, of course, but the police officers, you know, that would be a big deterrent for some of the new condo apartment-style housing, some of which we signed a contract, remember, I executed a contract last week.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wells?
Yes, I, um, I'm like, like Councilwoman Gutierrez said, I trust the chief and the city manager to do the right thing. I agree with Councilwoman James, and, you know, as far as the fifty mile, like, that's a, that's, that's a lot. But I wouldn't want to be the one to support or vote for taking that vehicle from someone that I already had it. So I think maybe grandfathering them in and just following this policy moving forward. And then I, I kind of agree with the stationary cars, but a criminal's going to know. Like, for instance, I ride by the city tomorrow, I know that car is going to be there, you know? So I would rather see cars with, with officers in them. But, um, I do, I, I kind of agree, but I just wouldn't be, I wouldn't want to be the one to take it from someone, you know, being that we've already given it. Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir.
In response to Councilwoman Wells, I think we only have one employee that is above that fifty-mile ratio, and it was a member of command, which would be exempt anyway. And then the second one is an employee that has been with the agency for a number of years, correct?
Twenty-plus years, yes, and he's assigned to a, um,
Specialized unit.
A specialized task force with the feds.
Councilman Mears?
No questions.
Alright, so my question. Not so quick. So the persons that are at that fifty-mile radius, do we know what their response time is or has been when they have had to report to an emergency?
I couldn't tell you per se what their response time is, but for CID, the one who is in detectives, his response time, I would probably say is under an hour. And then the, uh, the officer that's attached to the task force, he may not have to come to the City of Forest Park. So he, his station varies day to day.
Well, just to clarify, Mayor Butler, if you will, for the record, the CID investigator, that particular position, wouldn't be the first to respond. So it's not as if it's taking us an hour to respond to the actual incident. It would just be for CID to actually get on the same, to do their portion after the, the officers have secured it. I think that's what you were meaning is an hour. I just don't want to mess up the response time.
That is correct. He, he wouldn't be one of the initial responders. Um, but in the event his phone rings and he needs to respond back to the city, all of our detectives have about an hour response time.
Alright, thank you.
Pleasure.
Item eleven, council dis- council discussion on GMA Pension Plan Agreement and Adoption of Ordinance. Background and history, as part of the city manager's citywide employee evaluation, a large percentage of employees stated that they would like to see a pension plan implemented. Earlier in the year, the city manager presented the first full read of the proposed pension plan for input from the governing body and further approval. Now that the Georgia Municipal Employee Benefit System of Trustees have finalized the document, the governing body must adopt the the restated adoption agreement and service credit purchase adendum. If approved, our plan will begin August first, twenty twenty-four with a service purchase window from September first through October thirty-first. Uh, Mr. Clark?
Yes, ma'am. Governing body, we've had several conversations relative to the introduction of our very first pension plan. This is the final hurdle that we have to get across, and this is just the official adoption of the ordinance in which we transmit back to GMA. Um, and we're looking forward to this plan beginning in August. Um, and we're looking forward to this plan beginning August first, two thousand twenty-four. Again, this is a fiscal impact of nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, of which we already have budgeted set funds by department um within the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. On behalf of our employees, Mayor and Council, we are thankful that you have allowed us to go down um this path to ensure that the benefits package that we offer to our employees is second to none.
Thank you, Councilwoman James, Councilman Antoine, Councilman Gutierrez, Councilwoman Wells, and Councilman, Councilman Mears.
No questions.
Item twelve, council discussion on the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. Background and history. The proposed funded dollar amount for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget is forty-one million eight hundred ninety-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. The budget meticulously allocates resources across various city priorities and programs. These allocations are made with the intent to enhance public safety, improve infrastructure, promote economic development and provide essential services. From maintaining our parks and recreational facilities to supporting educational programs and ensuring the upkeep of our streets and utilities, the budget is designed to meet the diverse needs of our community. The city manager will present a full overview of the proposed budget.
Mayor and Council, um, we are excited to present to you your fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget, uh, which encompasses projected expenses and revenues in the amount of forty-one point eight million dollars, which is the result of several months of dedicated work by the city council members and city staff. Some of the highlights of this budget that we wanted to share with you is that our revenues are forecasted at two percent higher, lower, I'm sorry, than previous years due to the recent contract with our sanitation provider. Again, that's still waste management. We are still expecting to see some form of an increase in the franchise fees as well as implementation of the Open Gov platform. Again, the Open Gov platform will allow us to be be completely transparent as it relates to our KPIs, which stem from our operational audit, which we will present to you at the second meeting in July. The other thing that we're proud of is that with everything that I'll share that's included in this budget, we were still able to budget contingencies in the amount of three hundred forty-one thousand dollars, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Also, again, similar to last year, we'll be evaluating this budget mid-year. Um, six months within the year, just to see where we are and where our revenues and our expenditures are trending. Some of the things I highlight within this budget for our fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, property taxes, projected revenues, last year we were, we estimated thirty-two million dollars. This year, based upon an uptick in values, we're estimating that we'll collect thirty-four million dollars, which is equivalent to a one point eight million dollar variance over the previous year. The other thing I'd like to point out for you is the charges for services for fiscal year twenty-three through twenty-four, we estimate that we'll receive one point three million dollars, which is five hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars difference from last year. We'll move on to some of our departments. We'll start first with our legislative budget. Um, this budget allows for the community initiatives, allows for the funding of capital ward projects, additional community events, um, and emergency contingencies for funding of things unknown and upgrade of different technology and communications for our governing body members. We do plan on deploying new lap, I'm sorry, new iPads as well as a new agenda software sometime before the fourth quarter of this year. So council members, you're remembering our strategic planning retreat. One of the major things that we talked about was the actual events for the city council members. Um, based upon all of the events that were occurring across the city, we wanted to streamline what that process looked like. And so what we've done, we've stripped all of the individual events out of the budget and in turn, we've gone back and added per ward, including the mayor at large, forty-five thousand dollars. So that's forty-five thousand dollars respectfully for Mayor Butler and wards one through five. In addition to that, there were some things that were not right in the budget as it relates to numbers. We've corrected all of those numbers within the budget so that there were no duplications. Are there any questions regarding the legislative budgets? And last but certainly not least, the capital outlay, which are the various projects that you do within your respective wards. Um, those funds have been budgeted at forty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Before I go through the entire report, are there any questions relative to legislative office budget?
Councilwoman James, Councilman Antoine, Councilman Gutierrez? Councilwoman Wells?
Um, yeah, did we um add, remember how we had um the the um Dr. Fulami showed up and asked about the recognition and we had agreed that we wanted to see that within the sports? Is that included in there or that's something we?
I don't know if recreation and leisure included it in their budgets, but I am certain once we devise, and I vaguely remember the conversation, um, but once we look at the recreation and leisure budget, um, we can look to see what the projected um expenditure was for the department. But if one of the governing body members kept reminding me of the request, I remember vaguely, I believe it was awards appreciation for the individuals that were playing Little League.
Yeah, the sp- in the sporting program.
Um, Mayor Butler, if you don't mind, I'll call up Director Maxwell to talk about um what something like that would cost because relatively speaking, the cost for a trophy and such is nominal.
Evening, Mayor Council.
Good evening.
Your manager. Currently, we do provide awards. She's looking for a banquet. She wants us to provide a banquet for the teams.
How many teams do we currently have?
Probably volleyball, you're probably looking at eight to ten teams. And she wanted us to provide, we provide a space for them to hold their banquet on site. But someone want to go offsite and they want us to pretty much provide that. We provide a space, six-nine-six pavilion, dance room, if they want to have a banquet, they reserve it in advance and we'll pretty much provide them that. But we give them awards, but my understanding, every time I'm talking with her, she wants us to provide them with a banquet.
Is that just for volleyball or the other sports as well?
The ones she go, but it's for, yeah, that's.
Yeah, if we do it for one, we'd have to do it for all, but yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Um, so I don't.
Hold on, um, Councilwoman Wells had a question.
Um, I'm sorry. Um, I don't think, well, I'm not sure. I would like to ask her because I don't think she was referring to a banquet because I know that's not, that's kind of like not normal. Because the teams and the parents always come together and have a banquet for the kids. But I think she's more so talking about recognizing them and and the trophies because I know one year, I think other people, but I've been a sponsor, I've had them purchase trophies. So I think that's what she was talking about. Like we should have something, an award ceremony for them, especially all of them should get something, but especially if we have a championship team. So I think that's what she was.
Yeah, and we have that after each game. We present it with them.
The little necklace.
Yeah. Yeah, we present, I said, the awards to them. Uh, but at the end of the day, I she, from my understanding, she, the kids want a banquet. We give them awards, we get the coaches, a big trophy. And if the kids win the championship, they get a medal and a trophy. But if they don't win the championship, they just get a participation medal.
Did that just start?
No. Because we've been doing that with soccer and every, and basketball. And we play baseball with the county, so yeah, they get, that's that play game. So that's why I'm, it's more of a banquet.
Every kid gets a trophy.
No, if you win the championship, every kid gets a trophy. But participation wise, you get a medal. So the trophies and the medal, if we gave out the same thing, what's the use of it?
Yeah.
Participate. So the trophies are for you winning championship. If you win the championship, the team, uh, team get a team trophy for the coach and each individual player gets a trophy.
Councilwoman James?
So um, I'll just uh speak to that um too. Um, it's been going on for a long, 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 long time since my kids were kids. Um, they always recognize the kids with um things, but um as volunteer coaches, uh, individual volunteer coaches, they can go above and beyond depending on what their preference is. Um, I know when I used to coach the volleyball team, I had a banquet and I use a space that the the um city provided. So um, I guess we would just get, need to get clarity from her. But I do agree with um Director Maxwell that they are doing um a lot for the kids right now.
And so my que- I'm sorry, one second. Would would there, would anything preclude uh each council elected official, I should say, from donating from their respective coffers?
No.
Okay.
No.
Well, that's the thing, we shouldn't have to do it. We have a department, that's parks and rec, that's what they do.
Yeah, so if if that's what we are going to, in my opinion, is gonna get like, some of the teams go bowling because their parents come together and the team mom come together and do that. All the, and what she's saying, all of the kids' parents are not that involved and everybody's not getting that opportunity. So she wants to open it up to pretty much where we cater to and we'll say, hey, everybody plays baseball, let's go have our banquet at the bowling alley.
And so in something like that, we can gauge the cost if we set the location and talk to them in advance and say there's going to be X amount of people coming through or we can negotiate maybe with them on an ongoing rate.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's something that can be done, but it's just not the norm that, it's normally done by the parents. They come together and say, it's five hundred dollars, we pay X amount of dollars and all the kids go and they have one big banquet at Dave and Buster's or Hen Stripes, whatever, they're pretty much. Well, for the parents that can't afford that, we give them six-nine-six, we, they decorate it and pretty much go there.
Yeah, now I I I definitely agree with you on that. I don't think the city should take on the responsibility of having a banquet for every team. Like there's, you know, I'm a sport mom too. And I just think some things the parents should be responsible for. Like you have to invest in your own kids at the same time. And I don't think there's no other city that's paying for banquets for baseball, I mean, for teams. But I do think we should be recognizing them. Um, you know, if they win a championship or just for participating. And then maybe you cut all of that out if you just have one big celebration for everybody that participated in, you know, like come to some type of mutual agreement that way.
And we have some, even in soccer, um, answered the bell, they came, all their soccer teams came together and had one big banquet. But once again, they came, the parents came together and decided to do that right on the soccer field and things on that level. But we provide them with the awards and trophies. We have a ceremony right after the championship game. Right at the end of the season, their last season, we call them out, we give them their awards and things on that level.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
All right, so we'll do some research and get with Dr. Fulami um just to ascertain what the request was and I'll report back to the governing body. Moving, moving on for um some additional.
Oh, yes, sir.
I just wanted to say that, yeah, I think that's what we need to do. Thank you, Director Maxwell. I I I think it was good that he made clear everything that we are doing so people can understand. Um, but I think, you know, reaching back out to the parents and the coaches is the key thing to see, you know, what it is that they would like to do. Um, I'm I'm just all about celebrating. I liked what Councilwoman Wells said that we can do. Maybe like another, you know, version of like Forest Park Day at the park with all the rec teams and have like a fun day there for the community. I think that would be dope too, just to celebrate everybody.
All right, governing bodies, some additional budget highlights um within the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Um, you'll note several months back, we approved a pay and compensation study citywide. That study should be complete in August of this year. At such time, we'll have a a retreat with mayor and council just to go over the finding. Um, there are some additional personnel changes within this budget. We are working through the office of our PIO on a complete overhaul of our city website. Um, we've already talked about implementation of the city's pension plan as well as enhanced marketing efforts. This budget does include a three percent um cost of living increase across the board for all of the employees just to get us closer to what that study will show us in August. For our fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five capital budget, it totals one point six million dollars, of which three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars has been appropriated for firing EMS, several technology enhancements, additional contractual services as well as additional suppression uniforms for the fire. We are excited that through our fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget, we're able to aid Chief Clemens and her department in the purchase of two fire trucks, ju- I'm sorry, two EMS trucks um just to ensure full coverage for our city. Um, for our police services division, um, their capital budget is marked at seven hundred and nine thousand dollars, which includes some additional patrol vehicles and a mobile command unit. This mobile command unit is going to allow the police department to travel around the city with all of their gear in one truck. Our, some of our command staff members are traveling out to see this particular truck that'll be on display around the city sometime in in later part of this year approved. For our public works department, the budget proposal for capital is three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, which includes three F-one-fifty pickup trucks, a freight liner liner with a hook lift lift system as well as a F-two-fifty pickup truck. For the Office of Information Technology, um, we've budgeted their capital improvement dollars at two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, which includes a desktop PC refresher, host server refresher, network equipment as well as additional refreshes with the Wi-Fi unit. For the Office of Code Enforcement, we're working on the creation of new logos for their vehicle as well as ensuring that within our code enforcement department, all of the literature is in both Spanish and English. We recognize that we have additional languages in this city, but we're just trying to use this as a starting part point as well as increased beautification efforts around the city. Clothing allowance for all employees as well as we'll be looking into adding a truck to the fleet for code enforcement as well as we fund it employee appreciation citywide. For the Office of Economic Development, we budgeted for additional quarterly business association network events, um quarterly Main Street events, bi-annual developers, meetings, consulting services, expansion of what our film portfolio looks like for this city. As well as the Office of Economic Development will be hosting strategic planning retreats with the URA, the DDA, the DA and any other boards around the city. For the Office of Finance, um, they'll continue to work on their monthly closeout procedures, submitting their annual report because we'll never be late on record for another audit as long as this administration is here. Additional employee appreciation.
Say that again?
Ma'am.
Can you say that again?
We'll never be late for another audit.
Okay, we'll see.
Can you make sure they send a minute, please?
Heads will roll, that can't happen. Throw me off.
You're on a roll too.
All right, as well as through Open Gov, just improving what that budget platform looks like as well as improved accounting processes with updated policies and procedures. A lot of the highlights for the finance department, you'll start seeing roll around in policy format as we began to work on the standard operating procedures for the Office of Finance. For our fire and emergency services, ongoing facility improvements, we recognize that we now have three stations. We're continuing to look at the station on Jonesboro Road as we know that it needs a complete overhaul with the HVAC. I think we've done all the patchwork that we can do there as well as our fire station two-one Linda Lane, Linda Way. We're continuing to aesthetically improve that fire station. Governing body members, if you haven't had the opportunity to see some of the improvements made by our parks and rec, I'm sorry, Public Works, uh, Bill Demonton, this guy through the efforts of Chief Clemens and Deputy Chief Halcom, we invite you to go take a look at some of the upgrades of that si- of that station. We've also replaced, I want to say over sixty or eighty beds for all the fire stations citywide. Um, we, we are in the process of ordering two new rescue trucks as well as we're looking at replacing the tower truck, which have a cost of close to two million dollars. Um, also some more thermal imaging cameras for our fire department as well as you'll find it consistent. We've, we've approved these employee appreciation dollars citywide. For the Office of Human Resources, um, again, one of the position highlights for this department is the addition of the risk management analyst for this department. Um, rolling out fully the ADP model as well as moving forward with this paperless initiative in the Office of HR. For the Office of Information Technology, we'll be purchasing two vehicles for the IT department. Um, council members, you may recall seeing the Geek Squad vehicles that roll around all over the metropolitan area. Um, Director Cox is looking at getting something very similar. We are going to try for efficiency purposes to look at some electronic electric vehicles for the Office of Information Technology, but I'm sure they'll be relieved not to have to borrow the truck from Public Works every day. Um, as well as additional police MDT cameras for um the police department and we're planning on replacing twenty-five percent of our desktop citywide. For the Office of Municipal Court, we're really excited about the efforts of municipal court under the leadership of Dr. Dorothy Roper Jackson, who recently on Friday rededicated municipal court. They're looking at going more, more robust with their electronic offerings just to simplify and streamline court operations as well as they've started working on a complete redesign of the city website. It has been removed from up under the police department as well as they'll be establishing a Gen X court. as well as they'll be establishing a Gen X court. Mayor Butler, if you don't mind, because this is something very exciting for the community. I'd like to ask Ms. Dorothy Roper Jackson to explain the implementation of the Gen X court as well as the multicultural education sessions that they're looking at uh, pushing forth for municipal court. This is something that I believe will be one of the only courts within Clayton County to offer this, and we're just excited to continue to offer innovative solutions for all of our constituents.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good evening.
Council members, the manager. Well, they, for the Gen X court, we are trying to, um, excuse me, establish between the age group of like seventeen to twenty four, twenty five. We are trying to deal with college high school and college students. So when they come into court, if they get a citation, come into court, we are trying not to let that go on their record to affect them in future. So we are trying to establish something where that we could do like send them to like commute, like a commuter program and um, so that their records are not affected in the future. Then the increase what establish a multicultural. Okay, so for the multicultural education session, I'm looking to meet with like an attorney or an attorney or.
What you doing, Mr. Clark?
Oh, he is just throwing me off. Uh, for the multicultural education session, we are looking to meet with like attorneys in that field to help because we we noticed that there's a large population of Spanish speaking. We also have a few Asian and and other um, cultural who attend court. So because of that, we we are looking to establish something for them where um, most of them like do not understand especially English. So we have a Spanish interpreter who who is in court to assist them, but we also want to make sure they understand what is going on. So um, one of the, one of the plan is to have all the court sessions, like the judge introduction, the rules, procedures, and everything that will affect and not affect them be televised on the, on the um, come, on the television in the courtroom, both in English and Spanish, so they understand. I'm also looking to get some brochures in Spanish that explain to them what their rights is and what they can do because I'm sure most of them are afraid to come into court, but we are just trying to let them know that we are there for them to assist them in whatever way we can. Any other questions?
Thank you. That's amazing.
Mr. Clark?
Alright, yes, ma'am. Mayor and council, we are almost there. For the planning and community development director, thank you for the confirmation of our new planning and community development director. We're continuing to work through the modernization and digitization of the office. Council members, we'll have to have a rededication of community development because the office is now fully open. Um, we're just waiting on July for us to move business licenses under one roof with planning and community development. That means we will finally have a one stop shop for this city. Um, we're continuing to audit our zoning overlay district, as well as we'll be looking at bringing in an additional entry level planner. For the police department, we're continuing with the facility upgrades. One of, one of the mandates that we have is just ensuring that all of our slots are full, as well as we've really enhanced what their community events look like uh, within this budget. For the office of E nine one one, we're continuing with the digital upgrades with E nine one one. You heard some of the presentation from the nine one one supervisor, as well as this budget allows for additional interoperability between the Forest Park and other agencies um, within Clayton County. For animal control, we are, we are updating the fleet for our animal control officers, officers to ensure that the dogs are protected at all times and cats, as well as we'll begin review of some of our older animal control ordinances that are that are currently on the books. For the office of public works, we will continue, be continuing to update their equipment, as well as we're looking at bringing one of their part-time employees to full-time status just to ensure litter control around this city. Last and certainly not least, for our recreational and regional leisure department, we are continuing to monitor all of the events and activities that are occurring on our property. This is a larger conversation, governing body members, that we want to have just about some things that are happening, but this budget allows for the additional security opportunities that we are beginning to need for some of our events, as well as we'll continue to build strong partnerships with businesses within the city. That is the budget presentation for the fiscal year twenty four twenty five budget. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Sir Councilwoman James.
So just a question on the ongoing facility upgrades um, within the police department. I was, um, I hadn't been to the police department in quite some time. When I went to the uh, rededication ceremony, that was wonderful and I saw the nice floors and everything. Um, I I do remember in the past that we, there were some issues with furniture and back in the old conference room and stuff like that. So the ongoing facility upgrades, is that something that's included, like the bathroom issues and the things that they had, the problems that the police department had at that time?
I'll defer to Chief Chris. I know, Ms. James, they probably ordered every piece of furniture out of the book that you can find for the office. Most of the offices have new office furniture, including the chief's office, but I'm not familiar with anything related with the restroom.
The restrooms at this point in time are operational. Uh, we do have some money, uh, some monies in this budget for some additional facility upgrades. So in the event we do have uh, some issues in the restrooms, we'll, we have funds to cover it. Hopefully I answered your question.
Yeah, so so when when are we gonna be open for a tour?
Oh, we're ready to tour now. Um, yes, we're ready to tour now, whenever you all are ready to come by.
One of the things the chief and I've talked about is, on a particular day of the week, the police department hosts their comp comp stat meetings um, at eight o'clock in the morning. And we think it would be a great opportunity for us to bring in our governing body members. Perhaps they can start it at nine o'clock instead of eight that morning, so that you can go through what a full comp stat meeting looks like, as well as we'll give you the full tour of the facility, especially since it's summertime, because the meeting happens every week. If that would be amenable to the governing body.
So I know that um, a lot of our buildings are old. Um, and um, you know, are probably are in need of upgrades, so I I just want to make sure that we are allocating the funds that we need as a governing body to our, our um, our chiefs and our department leaders to take care of their buildings.
Yes, ma'am. Um, we recognize that we have some additional work to do citywide. Um, one of our next major endeavors outside of the city center is we have to look at Station One on Jonesboro Road. And either we're going to sink a lot of capital into it, or we're going to have to demolish it and start over again, just to make certain that it's it's current with current code and the conditions are livable. But Ms. James, we have budgeted funds to ensure that we can keep the building up to par um, across citywide.
Thank you.
Councilman Antoine?
Sounds good.
Councilman Gutierrez?
Yes, um, my question is, I guess about the, um, I know, does the budget seem similar for um, Parks and Leisure, but but I know we had talked about adding sound to a lot of our events and adding the bathroom facilities. Um, are those expenses already in there? And then also, I wanted to just, I guess, inquire about some new chairs for the senior center, if that's included in there, because we've been promising that to our seniors for a while. And they got some chairs, but I think they're from another building, not the ones that you were gonna buy. I don't know.
Mayor Butler, I'd like to defer to Director Maxwell to approach the podium and talk about the chairs. I do remember that we purchased some chairs. I know that our procurement department is here and we recently approved the bid to change out the flooring. This budget does provide for enhanced services for our seniors, as well as related to the portable luxury restrooms. I do believe that we put those funds within recreation and leisure, but I believe that item was approved by the governing body already.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Good evening, the mayor and council.
Good evening.
Oh, one, the chairs. Yes, we did. They wanted the ones with the arms on them like we have in the council chambers now. We do have some of those down there for the seniors that are using the facility. And we can look at upgrading into more if need be, if we needed more than what we have down there now. But I I don't see us needing more than currently what we have down there now.
Councilwoman Wells?
Yeah, I'm not done, Mayor. Can you come back to me?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Well, no, you can continue.
Yeah, so can you, um, Tariq, I, well, I went down there and the ones they got, we definitely needed more. Um, and then also they got like a little iPad as a TV. Definitely look into that. Um, and then as far as the kid, is this including in your budget, the bathrooms and the the uh, sound? I know we paid a lot of the sound that, you know, we'll try, appreciate you taking that burden off from our funding and putting it on Parks and Rec during that contract. So is that enough? Do you have enough money?
Um, and the current upcoming budget is budgeted in there and between myself, the city manager and uh, finance, I think quarterly, we're gonna, we always come back and review the budget to see if anything needs to be pretty much added on there. It depends on how far we get into it. So that's our plan. To um, review the budget throughout the year to see where we at and see if anything needs to be adjusted over time. But currently, we have enough to get us started with what we have in.
And one of the things I'll point out for you, Councilman Gutierrez, well, live to seniors. Historically, they've been funded at six thousand dollars. This year, we're recommending funding them in the amount of twenty thousand dollars as it relates to the sound amplification for those events. Um, Ms. Talus, do you remember how many events we put into the R F P or R F Q um, for sound amplification services for the year?
Fifteen. It goes with the uh, the restrooms we have. So they go hand to hand, hand to hand.
Anything else, Councilman Gutierrez?
We have that consistency and and not like, you know, have some nice bathrooms at the beginning and then the last, you know, Fun Friday, we we gotta go back to the regular bathrooms. Kind of my people used to the nice toilet paper and then we go back to.
One of the things we do have to be cognizant of, um, absent the to- toilet paper, one of the things we do have to be cognizant of is that the allotment is only for fifteen events. And citywide, we have way more than fifteen events, so we just have to be strategic. And and we talked about this before, we just have to be strategic in asserting which event we will use to draw that number down um, for the fifteen. And of the fifteen, Councilman, um, I'm sorry, Director Maxwell, do you know how many were appropriated for governing body events? Outdoor events?
Um, well, currently, we have the Fun Friday, the Hispanic Heritage, nothing Fun Friday goes June, July, August, October, September?
Um, October.
Okay, she gonna push to October. So uh, five with that, and then I think Councilman Gutierrez has two and a possible three. That's what's currently that we've been doing, but we have other councilmen that's probably uh, come through with some other things as city events.
How many tailgates do we have for the year?
Four tailgates.
That means we have three remaining advanced before that fifteen is gone.
Yes, and anything outside of that, they give us a special discounted rate.
Alright, thank you. Councilwoman Wells?
Yeah, so kind of what Councilman Gutierrez is talking about, because I know we've been talking about this senior building for a long, long, long time. It's ancient at this moment. So like, I I don't know if this was a question he's getting at, but what is, are there any plans in with this budget to do anything in there as far as?
Yes, uh, July the first, they start redoing the floors in there for the first stage. Uh, we're gonna redo the floors. And then with us, once we see how far along we're going with the uh, epic, what is it?
The city center.
Yeah, the city center will determine how much more done to the senior building. But as of Ju- July the first, they will start uh, redoing the floors in the senior building.
Now, we still can work on the restrooms, because it's not like once we get the senior city center, that building won't be utilized or something.
Which building?
The senior center.
The restrooms on, that's, it, there's something wrong with the restroom?
Yeah, they were built in nineteen.
Oh, oh, you talking about just, oh, you talking about that. Oh, you talking about that part just re, oh, okay, I'm. I thought it was, I thought it was something wrong.
Right here, right?
Okay, that part, okay, okay.
Something wrong with the restroom?
Oh, you talking about jazz?
No, for my, for what the bigger plan is, once everything is not, it won't, it that building will be a part of the tearing downs to build of the second part of stuff.
Okay, okay.
So that's why we're just doing the, the cosmetic stuff and then we pretty much going with it that way.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
You are.
Councilman Mears?
No questions.
Add a question. Is there in your budget vehicles, a vehicle, a van for the senior center specifically?
That's what we're currently working with uh, procurement now to see what we can get out of the current um, remaining of what we don't use for the senior center.
Alright, thank you.
Ma'am, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so Mr. Clark, uh, the first read for the public for the budget is, can you tell that?
It's at seven o'clock. It's within our regular meeting.
Oh. It's today?
The public hearing, yes.
It's today.
Okay, so when is the next one?
Um, the next public hearing is June twenty sixth, at which we're having a special call meeting to officially adopt the budget, so because it takes effect July one.
Okay, so we're not, we're not doing like the, well, we're not in the community and having the meeting, like the hearing, like?
We can. Um, one of my commitments was taking, essentially taking this budget on the road. So if the governing body members can provide a time and a date, um, we don't mind. Especially if it's at a ward meeting or something like that, we don't mind, um, presenting this bu- budget in a session, a public session within one of your respective wards. We'd be honored to. We'll take the whole staff.
Alright, thank you very much. Item thirteen, council discussion on the transition of the police department's cellular service from Verizon Wireless to T-Mobile. Background and history, the police department currently uses Verizon hotspots for in-car internet access to complete police reports, access drive data, issue citations, and the signal strength from Verizon is unsatisfactory. We have attempted to resolve the issue by providing heat maps of problem areas, upgraded to five G devices, and working with their network engineers to adjust Verizon's network in the city of Forest Park. We are looking to transition one patrol shift to T-Mobile to get confirmation the service meets expectations, then begin transitioning the city's mobile accounts from Verizon to T-Mobile. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Um, yeah, so just to give a little background, uh, we've been working with Verizon. Since I've been here, the cell signal has not been up to our standards, uh, especially for public safety. Uh, police department uses Verizon in all their in-car vehicles. Uh, we have not been happy with it. We have been working with Verizon top to bottom for the last two years, try to improve that performance, which would also impact the citizens of Forest Park, not just the city. Um, still not very happy, although they have made some improvements. Um, uh, so I feel like we've given them a fair shake and I've been talking with T-Mobile for the last few months. We actually demoed a couple of devices in the patrol vehicles for about two months and got really good feedback that it was much better coverage. Uh, so we'd like to basically start with a small contract with them, enough to outfit a shift of the police department, and then if that continues to go well, considering the rest of the city. Um, it would actually save the city a little bit of money, about twenty dollars a device, which over, if you calculate it across all of our devices, is about sixty thousand dollars a year, um, which would be pretty good savings. Uh, quite honestly, I have never used T-Mobile in any of the thirty-ish cities I have worked with, so I'm a little hesitant. Um, it's always been A T and T or Verizon, but they have invested a lot of money in their infrastructure in the metro Atlanta area. Um, and we saw that from our testing results. Uh, so we're happy to move forward with a, a, a larger test before we move onto kind of full scale. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman James.
No question, thank you.
Councilman Antoine? Councilman Gutierrez?
No questions.
Councilwoman Wells? And Councilman Mears?
No questions.
Alright, thank you. Item fourteen, council discussion of sound equipment services, annual contract with two options to renew. Request for bids number zero four one nine two four for use by Recreation and Leisure Department. Background and history, consists of the purchase of sound equipment services for city outdoor events. Three bids were received. Recommended award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Digital World Production. Annual amount not to exceed seventy seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, and the for- funding source is from the special events line item. Good evening.
Good evening. Um, this is a request for bid, um, again, for sound equipment services for the outdoor um, events that Recreation and Leisure puts on for the city. Uh, we did put it out publicly and solicited through our website and other avenues, and we received three bids in for it. And we went with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and this is an annual amount, and it does have an option to renew for two, um, years if we choose to.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments, Councilwoman James?
No questions.
Councilman Antoine?
Good.
Councilman Gutierrez?
Yeah, what were the bids? That wasn't the lowest bidder.
The lowest bidder, um, it, looking at the bid tabulation, they came in very, um, below the, uh, industry standard, uh, for pricing, as well as, uh, when we did the evaluation, um, we, um, did not receive, um, any reference responses back except, I believe, by one. Um, and there was a little confusion with bid submission and things of that nature with that bidder. So after the reveal, the evaluation, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder was selected.
Okay, so like this individual has had events in our city, so I don't know who the references were. I understand, I guess it's just like a standard of equipment, but the, that bid, I know, I mean, I, I had, um, you know, encouraged him to bid, it was his first bid to the city, and I don't know how, you know, what the difference was, but, uh, I guess it makes sense if that's who y'all want to go with, but, uh, I thought that we were going with the lowest bidder, and he has had events in the city, so I, um, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not, I guess, I'm not opposed to going with whoever y'all choose, but if the process is going with the lowest bidder that has the equipment for our events, I don't see how this is the right one, when this other individual has had events in the city.
Councilmember Gutierrez, I just, um, this is the city attorney, I just want to clarify, so it's not just, it doesn't just go to the lowest bidder, it goes to the lowest and most responsible bidder. And since that bidder didn't provide all of the necessary information references and didn't provide the necessary experience as a part of the bidding procedures, that's why, um, they weren't selected.
Makes sense, thank you.
Councilwoman Wells?
I was kind of, he kind of cleared it up. So thank you, no.
Councilman Mears?
No questions.
All right, thank you. Council discussion of Clorox Park Use Request for Culture Day. Background and history, Clorox, whose main office is in Forest Park, has been a partner with the Recreation and Leisure Services Department for nearly two years. With this partnership, Clorox has provided various giveaways to special events hosted by the city such as Spring Fest, as well as back-to-school bags and supplies for the summer camp program. Clorox is requesting to use the amphitheater and Pavilion Three on Thursday, June twentieth, twenty twenty-four at no charge for their Culture Day event. This event is open to Clorox employees and their families. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Council.
Good evening.
Um, as stated, Clorox would like to have their Culture Day here at Star Park. Um, and they're pretty much looking to use the amphitheater and Pavilion Three, they've provided us with the insurance and, um, reached out to, uh, PD on that end to see if they have anybody that'll be able to come out.
Thank you. Councilwoman James?
No questions, thank you.
Councilman Antoine?
Thank you, I see you.
Councilman Gutierrez?
No questions.
Councilwoman Wells? And Councilman Mears?
No questions.
All right, thank you. Item sixteen, council discussion of a fee waiver for Fort Gillum Army Base Park Use Request for Family Day. Background and history, the army base located at Fort Gillum is requesting to use the amphitheater and Pavilion Three on Friday, July twelfth, twenty twenty-four at no charge for their Family Day event. This celebration is for the military members and their families for their contribution to the army. This event will feature games, bounce houses, catered food, and drinks. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening again.
All right. Let's get the, uh, military base on, that's still stationed at Fort Gillum, would like to use the amphitheater and Pavilion Three to have their family and friends day to show, show recognition to, uh, members of the military. And with this, we're looking to start a partnership with the current members that are on the the base to pretty much help out within the Recreation Department and within the city.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman James?
Thank you, I'm glad to see that.
Councilman Antoine?
So moved.
Councilman Gutierrez?
No, no questions.
Councilwoman Wells? And Councilman Mears?
No questions.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Father Mason did not mention that for the previous item as well as this item, staff would like to recommend the addition of two conditions. The first condition would be insurance totaling one million dollars listed in the city of Forest Park as additionally insured. Um, the second condition would be that based upon the number of people that they have ample, um, police presence, hired police presence, um, just to accommodate the event for our safety precautions.
All right, thank you. And then we had the added item, are we doing that now?
Pushed out about what you just said.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so is that gonna be for everybody that want to rent the park? They got a one million dollar insurance?
Yes, ma'am. It sounds like a large aggregate and a lot of money, but it's, it's not, it's not. But it protects us should something, in the event something happens on our, on our property, and it's pretty standard around the initial, I think the majority of them are already turning in policies.
Yeah, we every, since we've been doing it, we haven't had any pushback on, um, with the larger festivals, now if it's just the family reunions, that's totally, but the larger festivals, no, we haven't had any. It's showing that we get, uh, add the city as a rider and pretty much go with it.
And most individuals just go to the insurance they already have.
Yes.
All right, thank you. The added item, number seventeen, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget, budget amendment update.
Yes, ma'am. Members of the governing body, one of the things you know is that we share that we've been ensuring that the budget was kept intact, so um, we have members of our finance team, our finance director, Mr. John Wiggins, as well as our senior staff accountant to present these changes.
Good evening, Mayor Council.
Good evening.
Just wanna, uh, with the added, uh, addition to the agenda, just wanna, um, um, introduce our senior accountant, Ms. Nina Robinson, to present, uh, this budget amendment. This budget amendment should take care of, uh, of any out-of-balance, uh, accounts that we have and, and move us forward to, uh, next year. So I'll give it to Nina Robinson.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
City manager, other members of the governing body. I prepared this budget amendment as a standard process that we would go through normally bi- annually, we maybe quarterly, we would look at our process progress with and the adopted and amended budget, and we would make amendments where we need to based on changes that have occurred since we adopted the budget. So my process and my methodology was to go through every line item in the budget, starting with the revenue to see where we had additional resources that we could allocate to any expenses that might have gone over. And in that process, we, I found a few, uh, i- items that needed to be amended downward, so our revenue numbers decreased, but it was still sufficient to cover any needs for expenses. I did the same process with each department, looking at each line item and determining whether there were encumbrances that were in process or items that were in the pipeline as far as expenses to cover us through the month of June twenty twenty-four. And in that process, I've made line-by-line recommendations to amend each department's budget so that we could come back to a balanced budget of three, thirty-nine, thirty-nine million, seven hundred eighty-eight thousand, one eighty-five in revenue to support thirty-nine million, seven hundred thirty, eighty-eight thousand, one eighty-five in expenses. If you have any questions about any particular item that I presented to you, I'm happy to answer those for you.
Councilwoman James, question, recommend? Not at this time.
Councilman Antoine?
Not this time, but if I do, I'll come back to you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilman Gutierrez? Thank you.
Councilman Gutierrez?
No questions.
Councilwoman Wells? Councilman Mears?
No questions.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your approval.
Thank you.
We haven't approved it yet.
That was a good one. All right, is there a motion to adjourn the work session?
So moved.
That was Councilwoman James, there's a second. Councilman Antoine, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, opposed? All right, you guys need a break? All right, we're gonna take a four-minute break. We shall resume at seven fifteen, based on this clock. All right, good evening, everyone. It is seven sixteen, and the regular session for mayor and council from Monday, June seventeenth is called to order. Tonight's invocation is done by Dr. Payden, so all those who are able to stand, please do so and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you now for this time and this place that we have gathered to do business on behalf of, of the city. And God, we pray now, we invoke your presence as we do the business here, and God, we pray that we will accomplish everything tonight that need to be accomplished, and for that, we will give you glory, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I like that for which one stand, I was saying that. Ms. Rainey, roll call, please.
Yes, good evening. This is the roll call for June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, regular session. Mayor Butler?
Present.
Councilwoman James?
Present.
Councilmember Anton?
Good evening, everybody.
Councilmember Gutierrez? Councilmember Mears? I'm sorry, Councilmember Akins Wells? Councilmember Mears? Mayor Butler, you have a call.
Thank you very much. The consent agenda, is there any items that the governing body desires to add or delete from the consent agenda? Not hearing anything, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
That's Councilwoman James, there's a second.
Second.
That was Councilman Antoine, is there any discussion? All right, Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Anton? Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Akins Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Mears?
Yes.
Thank you. The adoption of tonight's agenda with the addition of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget amendment approval. Is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda with such agenda, uh, such addition, excuse?
So moved.
That was Councilwoman James, there's a second.
Thank you.
That was Councilwoman Wells, is there any other discussion? Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Anton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Akins Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Mears?
Yes.
Thank you. The approval of the minutes from our work and regular meeting on May twentieth and June third and June fifth, special call meeting. Is there mo- I mean, are there any changes to be recommended? Has everyone reviewed them? If there's no changes to be recommended, is there a motion to group set minutes together and approve as is?
So moved.
That was Councilwoman James, is there a second?
Second.
That was Councilman Antoine, is there any discussion? Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Anton? Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Akins Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Mears?
Yes.
Thank you. Public comments, Ms. Rainey?
Yes, section two dash one dash seven Rules of, of Procedure and Decorum. Comments will be limited to a total of three minutes per speaker, twenty-one minutes are allotted in total. Members of the public are not allowed to participate in any debate or discussion conducted by the governing body members. Our public comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over which the governing body has jurisdiction. Each speaker must maintain a decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon members of the governing body or employees shouting and using obscene language. All questions and comments shall be directed to the presiding officer. And members of the governing body may respond to the comments during their closing comments if they desire.
Mr. Randall, you up first, sir?
Ending, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Um, things to front today, um, want to appreciate, uh, say thank you to the mayor, chief of police, and some of his, uh,
Speaking to the mic.
Some of the local law enforcement agencies that assisted in catching my brother's killer. I appreciate the support from the city, appreciate the support from the law enforcement officers that actually been there and helped me go through the difficult times that I've been through. Um, I have one officer in mind that has been a fantastic role model, has definitely been there, one hundred percent, has called me every day, has definitely checked up on me every day. Uh, definitely needs some type of accommodation or some type of reward medal. Definitely needs some type of accommodation or some type of reward medal. I'm not sure if I'm allowed to say the officer's name. The officer is Officer Moore. He has been a fantastic officer. When I mean fantastic, I mean from beyond fantastic. I can't put words into how good and how much he has treated me like a brother, basically. He has done so much. He's met with me in person, went out of his way, even on duty or even off duty, to even meet with me in person and help me cope with the struggles that I've been going through. And Chief Chris, I appreciate you and your departments, fully one hundred percent, in catching my brother's killer. And I appreciate it so much. You have no, I know I was a fan in the butt, though, but I, 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 I learned my mistakes from Chief, so. And I definitely, you know, appreciate everything that this city's done, and same for your voicemail as well, Ms. Mayor, which I actually saved, because it actually meant a lot to me. Only complaints that I have lately is the reckless driving in my area, Burks and Yancy. I have contacted Georgia State Patrol to up, up an additional patrol in that area, which I actually was successfully able to get some Georgia State Patrols in that area to patrol that area. It wasn't an easy request, but I know somebody from Georgia State Patrol that actually owed me a favor. So Georgia State Patrol has been fantastic patrolling the area, caught a lot of people for running the stop sign, and also slowed down some of the drug activity, which a couple of days ago, I found a full bag of cocaine laying on the ground on City View, which was, could have been dangerous for any kid that picked that up. There's been a high drug area in City, on City View at midnight. There's a lot of drug activity in that area. I've been seeing it numerous times. I'm not entirely sure what special operations Chief Chris has, but definitely needs to be up and patrolled that area.
Alright, thank you so much, sir. Mr. Elder Cook.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Elder Cook, just standing on behalf of the Forest Park Ministers Association. Just wanted to make everyone aware that every third Friday of the month, we meet at the Main Street Fountain and pray for the community, for our city council leaders and all in authority. We want to extend invitation to everybody and anyone in the community. Also, on the twenty-eighth, that's next Friday, from eleven to two, we'll be having a health fair in partnership with Height Health. We'll have free health screenings, all type of insurance information. And if you register ahead of time and show up, there's a free gift. You'll know what that gift is when you get there. It's gonna be held at five four nine Lamar Drive in Forest Park, Georgia. That's next Friday from eleven to two. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Payden.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I am standing to give you an invitation to come and visit the Church Wild Service Pastor. On December twenty-second, two, uh, two, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, my church experienced catastrophic damage, about nine hundred thousand dollars worth of damage. It was during the time where the temperature dropped very, very low, and thousands of gallons of water, a sprinkler system pipe busted, and thousands of gallons of water poured through my church. We are now able to go back in, and we're having a grand opening service. And I would love for you and the body, the public, to come and share in this grand celebration. It will be held on Sunday, July twenty-eighth, at four o'clock. And it will be at the Living Word Church of God in Christ, and the address is forty-six forty Beaver's Road, Forest Park, Georgia, three zero two nine seven, but I think y'all know the zip code. Again, that's Living Word Church of God in Christ, forty-six forty Beaver's Road in the Forest Park community. I would love to have you come. We're gonna be singing, we're gonna be, uh, Mr. Clark marked me and plagued me because I'm Pentecostal. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna get down, we're gonna go for it. We're gonna have a good time. So I would love for you all to come and just be a part of it. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, the time.
Four.
Yes.
It's four.
What?
City Manager is up, Mr. Park, you have the floor.
Yes, ma'am. Members of the governing body, it is always our honor to present a monthly overview of our city operations. As you know, we've tirelessly worked through the month of May, just completing the first presentation of our fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. We look forward to receiving any comments that any of you may have relative to this budget cycle. We have some very special work anniversaries. I'd be remiss if I did not give a huge shout out to three individuals who all celebrated one year, and that would be myself, Chief Chris, and Samaria McCoy, all of which are here with us today. So thank you, Forest Park, for having us till one a.m. Just for a brief calendar of events, just a reminder, all city offices, ninety central offices are closed on this Wednesday for the Juneteenth Celebration. Several members of the governing body are attending the Georgia Municipal Association's annual conference over the course of this weekend. On this Friday, we also have the Front Friday event, Wellness with Wales on the twenty-fifth, and then the Ward Three Block Party hosted by Code Enforcement on the twenty-sixth of June. Within our legislative offices, you will see the various events put on by different members of our governing body. So for Mayor Butler, we had the State of Development Authority, the Motherless Daughter Event, where she was keynote speaker, Doris Impact of War, and several others. Ward One, the Sana Fagan Celebration, the Forest Park High School Baccalaureate Ceremony for Ward Two. We hosted the Block Party with Councilmember Anton and Code Enforcement for Ward Three. Councilman Gutierrez hosted his monthly Bingo Night, as well as participated in the Older Americans' Day Celebration with several other members of the governing body. For Councilwoman Wells, the Wellness with Wells Event, as well as the tour of the New Hits Bill Boxing Rink over off of Frontage Road, which I'm sure, sure Ms. Wells will share more about. And for Ward Five, participating in the Budget Retreat. These are just a few pictures that showcase different events in the executive offices, as well as the legislative offices, for you to look at. For new businesses within the city, we had about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine new events, nine new businesses within our different respective wards. Governing body members to council aid will individually submit to you this information, just in case you want to go and say hello and officially welcome them to the city of Forest Park. Within our, with Ms. Pauline Warrior and our home program, again, we are still at sixty-two applicants year-to-date. With now, we're up to ten actual contractors within the program. We have one individual that is in the pipeline that is ready to fully go throughout the entirety of the program. At current, we do believe we're gonna have some residual funds, but we want to get through this first batch first, so that we can see what things within the neighboring software do we need to change, just to make sure it's efficient moving forward. For our capital projects with Director James Shelby. For those members of the community that have not seen the Park Monument signs, we anticipate going up before the end of this year. We hosted a pre-bid conference last week. That project is currently advertised, and the bids, we should have a presentation of mayor and council sometime before the end of August. For the city center, which that was one of the items that you, the governing body approved for the three D renderings. We are really excited about this project. We're at ninety-five percent complete with the exterior modeling. At such time as we get the three D renderings back, we're gonna schedule a retreat with our governing body members, so that we can take you through every aspect of the facility. Again, this building totaled approximately two hundred thousand square feet, and will be located right here on Forest Parkway, with all of our various departments, with the exception of fire and public works. Again, a huge thank you to Georgia Power for finally completing the installation of all of the exterior lighting for our gateway signs that have been erected around the city. The Business Incubator, the estimated project cost is four point four. Again, this is just an adaptive reuse of an old Rite Aid facility. It will feature a three-restaurant model with a concierge kitchen, a bar, as well as a bakery and a drive-up coffee shop. The Forest Park Landscape Media Project, we're currently working with Falcon on the full design of this landscape median strip. We're excited about all of these projects that are taking place on one of our busiest thoroughfares in the city, because it should all come out of the ground at the same time. Again, these are just some other capital projects that we're working on. This is the Star Park renovation. This shows the separation of Star Park from the active activities to that of the amphitheater functions. And our Office of Planning and Community Development, still working on finalizing what that Joint Fire Police Operations Center will look like here. Three high schoolers, high school seniors from Forest Park High School, just smiling in a local parade that we had to honor them. As it relates to our departments, and I'll, I'll breeze through this. For the City Clerk's Office, we filled it a hundred and fifty-five open record requests, open record requests for the month of May. Within our Code Enforcement Department, again, we have launched back our block parties within the various wards, and we're happy to bring onboard our new Code Enforcement Supervisor, Ms. Onicia Scott. For the month of May, we had a total of one thousand and ninety-seven cases comprising junk vehicles, tall grass, outdoor storage, blighted properties, et cetera. The Office of Code Enforcement is working with our tax collector for the city as we look at the new imposed taxes on blighted businesses within the city of Forest Park. Thank you, governing body, for that legislation. For the Office of Economic Development, Ms. Rochelle is continuing to work on the BRE, which is Business Retention and Expansion Visit. We also were able to host a very large video set right in our police department for the month of May. So we're excited about our additional film opportunities that we have during that famous police department. For the Office of Finance, for the month of May, we collected a total of one point two million dollars. We are working through finalizing what the AP Automation Process will look like city-wise. Citywide and governing body members, what that means is if there are any reimbursements that you are to get, instead of you having to wait on a check, it'll be automatically drafted within the banking account that you provide. We are certainly excited about the launch of Open Gov. Our Press Secretary is working on an announcement relative to everything happening with Open Gov. The first portion that we're focusing on is our procurement, because we want to ensure transparency and the participation of more local vendors within our governmental process. For our Fire Department, just some of the major fire responses. We did have an apartment fire at forty-seven sixty-seven Courtney Drive. We had a vehicle incident, forty-nine EMS assist, seven false alarms, and nine other responses. Chief Clemens received the Oscar Brendan Public Servant of the Year Award, as well as as well as firefighter paramedic Joseph Kidd attained his Fire Officer Two certification. We are happy to report that all twelve recruits passed their advanced EMT skills test, as well as four recruits passed AMT written and skills testing. And we're currently onboarding them to shift. That is a huge accomplishment for this fire department, as we seek to get one hundred percent fully staffed within that department. So a big round of applause for our fire EMS service. Our total EMS calls for the month of May was three hundred and seventy-four, with four of them being mutual aid calls. For our Office of Human Resources, we are continuing to try to onboard and fill as many of our positions as we can. We recently hosted a town hall meeting with all of our employees, just to talk about our benefit offerings for the city of Forest Park. Here is Councilman Gutierrez, standing with some of our legacy residents, as they celebrate an Older Americans' Day right here in the city of Forest Park. For the month of May, our Office of Information and Technology, under the leadership of Director Josh Cox, we had two hundred and twenty-two tickets open, of which we closed two hundred and eighteen tickets for average closure time of five point four days. We are still working on the citywide security camera upgrade. We do have to order just a few more cameras, but one of the things we're trying to do is get all of our user departments under one camera system. And governing body members, I know for the past two to three years, you've heard of the talk with ADP. We're happy to report that we are fully functioning with the ADP process, including employees flocking in directly within ADP. So a huge thanks to our HR department, as well as our user departments. I know this has been a long time coming. For the Office of Municipal Court Services, with our Court Administrator, Dorothy Roper Jackson, we had two, one thousand two hundred and eighty-two citations disposed, as well as four hundred and eighteen citations were continued. One thousand five hundred and twenty tickets were adjudicated. Fifty-six of them were failed to appear for a total reporting of three thousand two hundred and seventy-six citations for the month of May. In the Office of Planning and Community Development, for the month of May, they executed twenty-two zoning verifications and issued twenty-five trade permits. We are really excited about the first phase of this intergov system, to where our business community will be able to communicate back to the operational side of the house electronically, and will never have to worry about coming inside the office for their affairs. This graph just shows some of the different building permits that were issued for our community. If you haven't had the opportunity to ride down Lake Drive, we're super excited to see more of those seven hundred thousand dollar homes being erected on that street. I am told that of the six or seven that is currently on the way of being built, three of them have already been successfully closed. For our Police Department, we onboarded four new employees for the month of May. You met them at our last meeting. As it relates to some of the community affairs, they are continuing to develop a lesson plan for the Explorers Program. For the community members that are not aware of the Explorers, I am a former Explorer, and it's an opportunity for our youth to get involved in all of the things that happen at your local police department. We're working through the development of a neighborhood watch program, and we're also working through the efforts of Chief Chris on a partnership with Planet Fitness to offer free memberships to all Forest Park Police Officers. And I think there are a few words, miss, because we're gonna try to get this for all Forest Park employees, as we practice a healthy and well lifestyle. For the Office of our Press Secretary, we continue to be featured on several different news outlets. Some of our major news stories that were picked up, of course, Forest Park designation as a Purple Heart City, our media advisory regard, regarding the arrest made in the homicide on Burks Road, our temporary closure for Perkins Park. That story was picked up by WSB TV, and I'm sure Councilwoman Wells will talk further about that. But if you haven't had the opportunity to see the renovations of that basketball court, it is absolutely beautiful. The city offered our free Looa Boot Camp for our legacy residents. This was an opportunity for north of a hundred of our legacy members to come together for a day in the hot sun of health and wellness. As well as our feasibility study that we did, we are underway for the pedestrian bridge. That story was picked up by the Clayton News Daily. For our Public Works Department, we, we served seventy-three point seventy-five miles regarding, relative to a hundred and thirteen hours of just general work in the field. For our Sanitation Department, we had seven dead animals removed from the rites of way, governing body members. We are aware that grass is continuing to grow, because we are in that season, and we're doing everything within our power to make sure that we stay ahead of it as much as we can. For our Recreation and Leisure Department, they kicked off the month with their quarterly Parents' Night Out, as well as we concluded the month of May with our after-school program. Summer camp Forest Park is underway, and we're proud to report that we have a hundred-plus participants in the summer camp. Governing body members, if you are interested in volunteering for the summer with some of our local kids, please feel free to reach out to Director Maxwell. The kids would love to see you there and talk to them about local government. This is just a picture of some of our legacy residents in their beautiful orange. These are the dancing, jazzy, snazzy seniors. And again, we invite everybody to download our app to report any and all violations citywide. Governing body, that is my report for the month of May.
Excellent, thank you very much. Well, let's see. We have a proclamation in recognition of Pride Month. So I'm gonna ask, well, I mean, what is the proclamation? Okay. If the governing body members want to come down front with me, if there's anyone that identifies as a member of this community and/or who would like to simply stand in solidarity with this community, you may also stand with us as I read the proclamation. I was just thinking in my head. Well, let's see. All right, presentations, we are One Clayton Festival. Presentation by our very own Chief Latasha Clemens and her twenty-twenty-four Leadership Clayton Class.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Leadership Clayton, uh, we are Clayton One Fest, and the team is going to uh, present, starting with our very own Dr. Clark.
Well, good evening, good evening, Mayor Butler.
Good evening.
Our City Council members and our manager, Clark. We, as you said, we are members of the best uh, Leadership Clayton Class, the class of twenty-twenty-four, and we are here tonight to share with you an exciting event that is coming to Clayton County, and that is the We Are One Clayton One Festival. And the We Are One Clayton Festival, aligning with what you just shared, is, is um, focused on diversity, equity, and inclusion in Clayton County, and demonstrating how Clayton County is a place that accepts and welcomes and supports all members of our community. So this will showcase that diversity that we have in our community and demonstrate to all the surrounding communities and beyond why Clayton County is the place to live, work, play, and prosper for all people.
The We Are One Clayton Fest is going to be held Saturday, September twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, and it's going to be located at International Park, uh, the Upper Fields at twenty-three hundred Walt Stevens Way.
Good evening. Clayton One Fest is dedicated to celebrating unity and diversity in Clayton County, highlighting the importance of living, working, and engaging as one. We have created five different sponsorship levels to assist with the execution of the festival. Clayton One Fest will include vendors, boot trucks, panel discussions, children's activities, and performances of different cultures. Together, we can create an unforgettable celebration of unity and diversity that resonates throughout the county. Thank you for considering this opportunity to make a difference. We look forward to your support and partnership.
Mayor and Council, I, I passed along the uh, different sponsorship levels for your pining uh, to our City Clerk. Uh, just like any other um, organization or activity or event, uh, there is a mission behind all these events. Uh, we're, we're trying to bring all cultures together, all Hispanic Day, uh, Asian Day, LGBTQ Day, uh, all of these different events under one umbrella, uh, and one mission, one day. So our mission is at Clayton, we are one festival, or we are one festival. Our mission is to create a space where people from all backgrounds can come together to celebrate diversity and promote unity through a range of engaging activities and discussions. Uh, with all the events, uh, we're going to have a um, uh, uh, an incident, uh, action plan for this event where we'll be engaging in police and fire, uh, for safety uh, measures as well. All right, that concludes, and we're, you know, looking forward to your participation, your sponsorship, and your support.
All right.
We're gonna be going city to city.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Any questions or comments, Councilwoman James?
Thank you for this, uh, congratulations to your class.
Councilwoman Antoine?
Congratulations.
Councilwoman Gutierrez?
Love it. Um, proud of y'all. I, you know, I hope that the rotation brings it to Forest Park some, you know, in the future, but yeah.
And Councilwoman Wells?
Congratulations, and thank you so much, and hopefully we can look into being.
And Councilwoman Mears? All right, thank you so much. Great job.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Financial reporting of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four monthly financial report. Background and history, the Finance Department is presenting the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four monthly financial review for the city, of the city's financials. The purpose of the monthly financial review is to help us know how healthy the city's cash flow is and help elevate department performance to see if the executive office needs to reallocate resources to achieve the financial goals of the city. And good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Yes, sir.
Uh, this is the um, once again, the monthly financial report for the FY twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, Finance, uh, this is um, as of, of May thirty-first, these numbers that are being presented to you. As we go through these slides here, these are some of the, there's some of the standard slides that I show every month. This is about the city of Forest Park. This here is the mayor of Forest Park, City Council. City Manager, Department's Direct, Department Directors. First slide to introduce to you, the General Fund, the May Summary by category. This shows um, the revenue coming in for May at uh, year-to-date actual is thirty-six million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, seven sixty-two. Our expenses for May, year-to, year-to-date actual is coming in at thirty million, three forty-three, one ninety-five. Also on the side shows the uh, a graph, and it shows the difference adds at that particular time of uh, six million. Next slide. Next slide is the General Fund, May Summary by Department. This shows a breakdown of uh, each of the departments, and it shows their budget as well as actual, and it shows their balance adds up May, May the first, twenty-twenty-four. Also shows a percentage of the budget that's been used. On the side, we have a pie graph that just depicts the um, the percentage budget used. Moving on to the next. Moving on to the, the next slide. All other funds uh, for the city, and this is uh, a May summary table showing all of the other funds and showing the revenue budget, as well as the revenue actual, the balance, as well as the expense budget and actual, and their balance also. And that concludes the uh, financial report. Any questions?
Thank you very much, sir. Councilwoman James, questions?
Thank you.
Councilwoman Antoine? Councilwoman Gutierrez?
Nope, no questions.
Councilwoman Wells?
No, thank you.
And Councilman Mears?
No questions.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Now, is there a motion to recess the regular session and enter into our public hearing regarding our, the, the adoption of the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget?
So move.
That was Councilwoman James. Is there a second? That was Councilwoman Antoine. Is there any discussion? Um, Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Anton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Akins Wells? Councilmember Mears?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Now, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So move.
Councilwoman James, is there a second? Now, it's Councilwoman Antoine, any discussion? Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Anton? Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Akins Wells? Councilmember Mears?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, per our charter for all public hearings, a ten minutes per side is allotted to speak. So if there's anyone who wanted to speak in favor of the proposed budget, you may line up at the podium now, and it's ten minutes in its totality. Yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
I, I just want to say that I am in favor. That's why I took a picture of the slide and hoping it'd be posted on the site. I am in favor, but I would like to see something in a line for the senior citizen uh, for vans and up raise that center with furniture, library, uh, different activity, uh, and also with park and rest. I would like to see something in the budget feasible for the scholars to be able to receive uh, awards at the end of their games, trophies, a banquet that comes out of the coaches' pockets. And some of the stakeholders has been doing it for numerous years. With this type of budget, I think we can find some type of room to include this. And I am serving on the Asian Independent Board for the ARC, and one of the conversation we do have is isolation for the seniors. And I think that our seniors are doing a wonderful job with line dancing and playing dominoes. But we actually need to get them out and about to, even if they just go sightsee the Pecanica Garden, uh, go to the zoo, uh, we need to have something there uh, with some type of activity other in those four corners room. I love our senior citizen building. I remember when it was first established by uh, the previous diocese along with some of the stakeholder who's now has transitioned over. They purchased a van. I noticed that the van now has been given over to Park and Rest for daycare. The senior need a van. We need to put a van back down there where it's supposed to be. And uh, I think with our city manager in place who has a very outlook of what a city look like to be functionally operated, I am for the budget. But I want to see the park leisure for the children to have a banquet and have a all the coaches can get together and do one banquet. It can be done. Every child on who participating should get some type of trophy. The same thing with our senior, we should have a Mr. and Mrs. Forest Park for the senior. That's something to give them um, that initiative that we really do appreciate them. When I was a child, what we used to do, and it was such a domino in our community, our park and recreation center centered at the Mr. and Mrs. Forest Park. The youth who had a uh, perfect attending in school, who did outreach in the community, and that was a way to saying, we appreciate what you're doing, and we will make them productive citizens. So I put that out there for any council to challenge me on starting a Mr. and Mrs. Forest Park and watch the behavior of the children. Also in this budget, we can look to try to have something for our scholars when school is out to give them a job like we used to do in the day with OIC, and give them the minimal wages. You know, they can come work inside the municipality, they can come work at the park, they can work at the lifeguard, or whatever that looks like, but we have to do something other than letting them go on the outside basketball court in this high climate, getting dehydrated, and put them to work, because many of them want to work for their back to school. I know you all and myself, we worked during the summer for back to school closing. So let's, let's put our seniors and our children where they need to be, and that's up front. Thank you. I'm gonna yield it back to you all.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. And much, much of what you spoke of, we discussed earlier. So the vans are coming, and there are upgrades in the budget, um, as well as for the vans in the budget for the senior center. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone. Is there anyone who wanted to speak in opposition of this budget? You may line up at the podium now. All right, not seeing anyone. Is there a motion to close said public hearing?
So move.
That was Councilwoman James. Is there a second? Now, it's Councilman Antoine. Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Anton? Councilmember Gutierrez? Councilmember Mears? I'm sorry, Councilmember Akins Wells? And Mears?
Oh, was that everyone? Okay, I'm sorry. So now, we closed it, did we reopen it? Now, is there a motion to reopen the regular session?
So move.
Now, it's Councilwoman James. Is there a second? Now, it's Councilman Antoine. Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember um, Anton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Akins Wells? Councilmember Mears?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Items five through eleven are on the consent agenda, which is approval on the renewal of Just Foya Open Records Request Software. Item six, council approval on the purchase of the bunker gear ratification. Item seven, council approval of task order twenty-twenty-four point zero-two B for additional renderings and animation of the city center project. Item eight, council approval of the task order for Croft to perform design, development, construction documents, and permitting and construction administration for Star Park. Item ten, council approval of a task order FDC twenty-twenty-four point zero-five for Falcon Design to Perform General Contractor Procurement and Construction Administration for the Rite Aid renovation or the Grapevine Project. Item ten, council approval of purchasing one Septon Heavy Duty Rescue Fire Truck for use by the Fire and Rescue Department. And item eleven, council approval on the extension of an HVAC maintenance contract with ABM. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So move.
Councilwoman James, is there a second? Now, it's Councilman Antoine. Is there any other discussion? Um, Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Anton? Councilmember Gutierrez? Councilmember Akins Wells? Councilmember Mears?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Item twelve, council approval of an ordinance increasing the hotel motel tax to eight percent. Is there a motion to approve this item? Now, it's Councilman Antoine. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Now, it's Councilwoman James. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Anton? Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Akins Wells? Councilmember Mears?
Yes, ma'am.
Council approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Forest Park and Clayton County for GIS services. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So move.
Councilwoman James, is there a second? Now, it's Councilman Antoine. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Anton? Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Akins Wells? Councilmember Mears?
Yes.
Council approval on GMA Pension Plan Agreement and Adoption of Ordinance. Is there a motion to approve this item? Now, it's Councilman Antoine. Is there a second?
Second.
Now, it's Councilman Mears. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Anton? Councilmember, member Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Akins Wells? Councilmember Mears?
Yes, ma'am.
Council approval on the transition of the Police Department Cellular Service from Verizon Wireless to T-Mobile. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So move.
Now, it's Councilwoman James. Is there a second? Councilman Antoine, is there any other discussion? Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Anton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Atkins Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Mears?
Yes ma'am.
Council approval of Sound Equipment Services and Annual Contract with Two Options to Renew Request for Bids Number Zero Four Nineteen Twenty Four for Use by Recreation and Leisure Department. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So move.
Now's Councilwoman James, is there a second? Now's Councilman Antoine, is there any other discussion? Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Anton? Councilmember Gutierrez?
No.
Councilmember Atkins Wells?
That's what I was. Sixteen.
Number sixteen. Councilmember Mears?
Yes.
All right, item seventeen, council approval of Clorox Park Use Request for Culture Day with the condition that they have the insurance recommendation and, um, police presence. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So move.
Now's Councilwoman Wells, I mean, James, is there a second?
Yes.
Now's Councilman Antoine, is there any other discussion? Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Anton? Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Atkins Wells? Councilmember Mears?
Yes ma'am.
Item eighteen, council approval of a fee waiver for Fort Gillum Army Base Park Use Request for Family Day with the same conditions as previously stated, the insurance and police presence. Now, thank you, Councilman Antoine?
I'll second.
Now's Councilwoman James, is there any discussion? All right, Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Anton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez? Councilmember Atkins Wells? Councilmember Mears?
Yes.
And the amended item number nineteen, the approval of the twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four budget amendment. Is there a motion to approve such? Now's Councilman Antoine, is there a second?
I'll second.
Now's Councilwoman James. Is there any last discussion on this item? Ms. Rainey?
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember, member Anton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez? Councilmember Atkins Wells? Councilmember Mears?
Yes ma'am.
All right, and we do have executive sessions tonight, and so I'm gonna ask for the closing comments by the governing body, Ms. James.
Thanks everyone for coming out. Remind you on this Thursday is the ward meeting at six-nine-six Main Street. We will also be on, on Zoom if you're not able to make it in person. Um, I'm excited about this weekend going to G M A Conference, bringing back some great information to, to, um, further enhance our city. Uh, we always get some great, uh, um, information of, on those classes that we take. Um, and so we are looking forward to, uh, getting that information back to you. Also, um, I'm going to request that our, you are at our next ward, at our next regular meeting for July, um, the U R A give a report on, we, we we are having a strategic planning meeting, um, in July, I don't remember the date. The twenty-sixth, from eight to five, eight to five. Um, and you all are invited to come, um, it is open to the public, um, but we have some strategic planning, um, items that we're trying to do with the U R A. Um, and we will have an update for you all on the status of the U R A and everything that we have going on next month. Thanks.
Councilman Antoine?
Thank you guys for coming, God bless.
Councilman Gutierrez?
Um, thank you everybody for coming out. Uh, currently, just so you all know, I'm in Las Vegas at the National Association of Latino Elected Officials. I, um, get on the board and, uh, I've been learning a lot. Today we had a, uh, class on workforce development and how to build these programs with the cities and, um, something that I reflected on today was, uh, you know, it's not the municipality's jobs to get people jobs, but it is a job to offer them the opportunities and make the connections for our people. So that's something that I'm always complaining about with Fort Gillum and other jobs here, but none of our people work there, but today, hearing it from the experts kind of just put that into context. But besides that, we have, um, this week code enforcement is celebrating and War Three, uh, I won't be there because of this. And when I get back, I have to go to G M A also and represent, uh, Forest Park. So really proud to be in all these spaces so we can bring more ideas to Forest Park and keep adding, uh, to all of the progress that we're doing. Thank you everybody for coming out. Thank you for the directors that, um, you know, added clarification to all the questions that we had. We appreciate you. And, uh, again, we just want to make sure that we are doing the best that we can with our taxpayer dollars. And, uh, thank you, Dr. Falami, for letting us know what it is that you and the parents want. Um, I agree with you, we need to put our seniors and our children at the forefront. We make these, um, you know, these budgets, so. Yep, everybody have a safe, uh, day and, uh, if y'all need anything, reach out.
That's what I was. Yes, um, so I wanted to go back to what Councilman Gutierrez was. Well, first, thank everyone for coming out. Um, we appreciate you. Appreciate all our directors, um, for everything that you do. Um, but I, I just wanted to, you know, put it on record that I just think our bidding process needs to be a little more transparent. Um, and I can hear it in Councilman Gutierrez's voice that you, you asked somebody to be a part of this process, thinking the process was one way and because we always hear about the lowest bidder, the lowest bidder, and so uh, turn to MetroCard, thank you for clearing that up. But I do, I, I I would like to see those bids because I just want to make sure that we are doing and, um, what's best for the city as well as giving people an opportunity because I know we all have friends and, you know, everybody has someone that they want to help out, but we want to have those same opportunities available for other people as well. And so I just want to make sure that the process is fair and we're actually going by what we say, um, we're going by. Um, and so as far as Perkins Park, like council, I mean, um, our city manager Clark stated, if you haven't written by, um, Perkins Park is actually looking like a park should look now. You know, I don't, I just don't believe that our pocket parks, because they're not right in the forefront, should, shouldn't look just like or as good as Star Park. And so we're headed there and the park, the, um, basketball court, court looks absolutely amazing. And so thank you so much, Mr. Watley, because I know I have gotten on your nerves so bad. Um, and Mr. Clark, so just thank y'all so much for helping me to help my community, um, move forward. And Fun Friday, so the first Fun Friday is this Friday, um, from seven to eleven. Uh, we'll have Ms. Erica Dawson, who is an amazing, amazing singer. Um, her and her band will be there this Friday. And so if you haven't purchased your V I P tables, do so. If you don't want to purchase a table, just bring your chairs and your family and neighbors and just fellowship with your community. Um, and have a good time. And Tuesday Wellness with Wells, this is the first before the last, so this last Tuesday will be the end and we're doing a Biggest Loser. So the Biggest Loser for Wellness with Wells will receive two hundred dollars and I still need another sponsor for that hundred dollars in case anybody want to, um, want to sponsor that. But I just wanted to show them, um, and motivate them, you know, and let them know that we appreciate them for participating in our events that we do. I mean, we have people come from everywhere just to participate in Wellness with Wells because their communities doesn't, don't offer it. And so, and it's a free event. So I just want to thank everyone that has something to do with, with that. Um, and that's it. Thank you all so much and I hope you have a blessed night. And happy late Father's Day to all of our amazing fathers.
Councilman Mears?
I think we lost them.
Okay, uh, let's see. Oh, so the last we spoke of Justin, he was just drafted to the L A Chargers. And so if anybody knows about the draft process, um, that's not a guarantee that they make the team, but I'm proud to say that he has officially made the team. So he is an official L A Charger.
Yes, 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 that is amazing.
Um, I had the opportunity to go to Blue Star Studios and they were building a set for a movie. And the actors that have come through that space are absolutely phenomenal. Um, to include what Kevin Hart, Samuel L. Jackson, and a couple of other ones, but it'll, it's really amazing. So I can't wait till they actually let us know the name of the movie so we can make sure we patronize and, and go check it out. And then, let's see, I'm going to leave you guys with this little note that someone sent me while I was sitting up here today and it says, embrace the gift of the present moment because it is the only time we truly have control over. And I thought that was just very poignant for today's time. Uh-oh, sorry. And so with that said, we do have to go into executive session. And so is there a motion to recess the regular meeting entered to executive session for personnel, litigation, real estate, or legal matters?
So move.
Now's Councilwoman Ja- James, is there a second?
Uh-oh.
Is there a second?
We need to wait for.
Is there a second?
I'm out of only one here.
All right, we still waiting on that second?
Sierra's second.
Uh, okay, thank you. We all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We shall return. And Ms. Rainey?
I'm gonna do that because it's Kim. I'll second it.
So I too, everybody said I.
Hate it.